Okay, well, good morning. Excuse me. Good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. We do appreciate your attendance and for the viewers, thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Larry Hudkins. And on my right is Vice Chair Commissioner Todd Wilchin and Commissioner Bill Avery. And I'm Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. Assisting us this morning, we have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. So will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you for joining in. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda?
Copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on Wall 3. Hearing room additionally, copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approval of the minutes of the County Corrections Director finalist meeting held on Friday, December 2nd, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the County Corrections Director finalist meeting. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, December 6th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of last week's meeting. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two are claims. Approval of all claims processed through December 13th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve all claims processed through today. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three are special presentations. Visitor's Improvement Fund grant to the Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation in amount of $7,871.48 for promotion of the historic Hay Market District Walking Tour. Diane Cunningham, Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation.
Good morning. My name is Diane Cunningham and I'm the Events Chair for the Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation. I'm also the co-owner of Burlington Antiques down in the Hay Market. I'm here to give a brief summary of LHDC and our project proposal for the historic Hay Market Walking Tour. The Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation, a nonprofit organization, is committed to continuing economic development, revitalization, preservation, and growth of Lincoln's historic Hay Market District. LHDC is a 22-member volunteer board made up of community leaders, area businesses, property owners, and city and downtown Lincoln Association officials. The board has a paid executive director and a farmers market manager. For the last 30 years, LHDC has provided guided tours to out-of-town and local tourists. The tourist provides information on 40 historic buildings over a six-block area. The use of a walking tour brochure has been an essential component to these tours. In 2015, new brochures were designed, printed, and advertised with the guidance of Ed Zimmer, Historic Preservation Planner, and with funding from a Visitors Improvement Fund grant. We have since hosted scheduled fall and spring tours with hundreds of people attending. The new brochures have been a great success and we are excited to expand on their popularity. LHDC seeks funding in 2017 to one, design and print 4,000 historic Hay Market neighbors inserts for the remaining 1,000 brochures we still have and for the next 3,000 to be printed. The insert will be four pages with photos of five buildings and possibly one more to show the growth of the grand mans. The new insert will feature the following buildings. The Government Square Block, which includes the old federal building, the old City Hall, the Pavilion Comfort Station, and then the next block south that includes the Terminal Building and the Mission Arts Rose Kirkwood Building. Number two, we are going to print 3,000 additional brochures for distribution. And number three, we're going to advertise and promote the historic walking tour and online tour by placing a full-page ad in the Lincoln Visitors Guide and to buy the website domain for our vanity page, haymarkettour.org. Our proposal requests $7,871.48 to increase enhanced tourism activity in the area and in Lincoln by expanding marketing and promoting the Hay Market Walking Tour. The walking tour brochure is made available at downtown hotels, select Hay Market businesses, and the Visitors Center. LHDC will continue to promote the self-guided walking tour on haymarkettour.org that can be used on smartphones and computers. We will continue to provide a spring and fall tour promoted through social media and press releases. Adding the historic neighbors insert to our current Hay Market Walking Tour will be the first step in assisting downtown Lincoln Association in creating a downtown historic tour. Guided tour training will be provided to downtown Lincoln Association staff and volunteers by Ed Zimmer, which will expand opportunities to give tours. With this added opportunity, the printing of additional brochures is a necessity. LHDC will implement this plan with the assistance of LHDC staff, marketing committee, community volunteers, and the DLA. Thank you for considering our grant request. Do you have any questions?
I will just make a comment. We had an opportunity to see the existing brochure at the VPC meeting and I was impressed with the quality and the beautiful photographs. It was really well done, so it's honored for us to be able to support the expansion.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments?
Could we have Diane pass that around so we could get a look at it?
Sure.
Okay. Any other comments? Otherwise, we would move to item 4A.
This is under new business, Visitors Improvement Fund Grant with the Lincoln Hay Market Development Corporation in amount of $7,871.48 for the purpose of promoting the historic Hay Market District Walking Tour. The term of the contract is January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2017.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the fund grant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. 3B is recognition of County Commissioner Larry Hudkins for his dedicated service to the people of Lancaster County.
I think it's not appropriate. Yeah, okay. I think that what we need to do is, if I might make a suggestion, could we present the special recognition at the end of the recessed the meeting here after, and then go to the Board of Equalization, and then after completing the Board of Equalization, return back and then make a special presentation? If that's okay with the Board?
Twenty-eight minutes, right.
Okay.
Run it from the room.
Yeah, let's do that. So let's move on then to item number 4B.
This is appointment of Alan Blazek, Paula Peterson, and Larry Williams to the Lancaster County Extension Board for three-year terms commenced in January 1st, 2017 and ending December 31st, 2019.
I'm Karen Wobig with the Lancaster County Extension Office. Hope you're all doing well today and staying warm. I'm very pleased to present to you today the three individuals that are seeking to be on our Extension Board. Two of the members, Alan Blazek and Paula Peterson, are seeking their second term, their second three-year term, and Larry Williams is seeking his first three-year term. And so we are here today to seek your approval of the members for our Extension Board. If it is okay, could each of them maybe say a little bit?
Sure.
Okay. Alan?
Well, this could be a bit embarrassing because I've worked with all of you over the years and some of you probably know me about as well as I know myself, but I'm Alan Blazek and I'm an Iowa farm boy to begin with, so I'm very proud of my farm background. And I come to Lincoln many years ago. In fact, my career spanned over 50 years, dealing with agricultural education and leadership education. Thirty-five of those years at the University of Nebraska, and I'm probably best known by my work with the Nebraska LEED program of which one of your board members has participated in. And that's been a great program, but I helped train county extension educators over the years through agricultural education. I put on workshops for them. I'd worked with them in many ways, and this just seems to be a natural third leg to the stool where now I get to be on the board, if you approve my nomination, and see the other side of the operation. So this has been a real treat for me during these first years, and I hope I'm able to serve another three years with your approval. Thank you. Have any questions?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Paula Peterson. I farm with my husband north of Waverly. My grandkids are now fourth-generation 4Hers and we're third-generation FFAers in the Waverly area. We would, I think it's important to keep the component of 4H in the education through the extension, and that's, I figure I've got to put my money where my mouth is, and if I want the kids involved, I have to be too. So that's all I've got. Do you have any questions?
Great philosophy.
Yeah. Larry?
Paula's just a dynamo. When there's a job to be done, she gets out at the Tribute to Agriculture and the Agricultural Education out at the county fair this year. This is her brainchild. And she doesn't complain much, just kind of a little quietly, but she and her husband have two of the bridges out that they can't get to their farm on, so she's always just willing to do every job that there is to be done. And Dr. Blazek, I had the pleasure of traveling with him to Israel, Egypt, and Morocco back in 1985 in the LEED program, and it's just wonderful to see these people keep coming back and giving more of themselves, and Sir Williams is the same way.
Okay, and Larry?
Good morning. My name is Larry Williams, native Nebraskan, Omaha, but came to school in Lincoln and never left. That was 40 years ago. And so many of you I know, Bill and Roma and Deb and Larry, because I worked at the city for 10 years as the Human Rights Director, and I'm back, wanting to serve, wanting to give where I can and be helpful. I see my role as one of providing information about our community, the city of Lincoln, and also the kids that I work with now on an on- and everyday basis at the Malone Community Center. It's hard to believe I've been gone from the city for five years and I've been at the Malone Center for five years already. So I'm looking forward to serving and learning more about the extension and its operations. I'm not going to sit here and say I know everything about it, but I've been around long enough to know enough to be dangerous. And so with that, I hope that you'll give me that approval so that I can continue to give and serve to Lancaster County and the city of Lincoln.
Thank you.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the appointments of these three folks. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
4C is setting the salary, the annual salary for Brad Johnson, County Corrections Director in amount of $106,000 effective December 8th, 2016 with a six-month review and associated increase of the annual salary to $110,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve the salary of Brad Johnson at 106,000 effective December 8th. Any discussion? Yes.
I would like to propose an amendment that the six-month review period be changed to three months. And the reason I am proposing this is that we went through a very lengthy process of evaluating Mr. Johnson when he was considered for the permanent position. Also, we know him. He was in the interim director's position for several months, so I think that a six-month review period is not necessary, and I propose that we reduce that to three months.
And what is the feeling of the Board, of the maker of the motion?
Was that me? Did I make the motion?
I think you did.
I did. I will accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. So, all right, with that friendly amendment then, any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. D is a resolution in matter of authorizing a county clerk to issue payments while the county board is adjourned.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this resolution, authorizing a county clerk to issue payments. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. E is a resolution authorizing installation and removal of traffic signs in Lancaster County.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. So you have before you today quite a list of traffic signs on the surface, so the first one of which is a citizen requested speed limit sign on 56th Street, just north of Saltillo. So we did believe that sign was warranted. The remaining signs are all associated with the new pavement that we got in this year. And so once the pavement is in and open to the public, we put up pavement in signs and speed limit signs associated with the pavement, as well as some city limit signs in the Waverly area. So although it looks like an extraordinary list of signs, it's really normal standard business for when we install pavement.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this resolution regarding the traffic signs. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is a grant contract with the city of Lincoln on behalf of the Lincoln Police Department in amount of $52,000 providing the supervision and gang suppression components of the Operation Tipping Point Program. The city will document $14,767 in matching funds, term of the grant contract to July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Human Services Director for the city of Lincoln in Lancaster County. Operation Tipping Point is a partnership between Lancaster County and the Police Department. A couple months ago, we had somebody from the Police Department, from the gang unit here, that actually talked about the gang issues in Lincoln, and then also how Operation Tipping Point is helping prevent additional gangs from coming in and helping those kids that are the low-risk affiliates of gangs stay out of gangs and get them to a safer place. And so what this grant funds, it's state funding through the Office of Violence Prevention, it funds a full-time gang outreach coordinator. They're a city employee. The city provides the cell phone, the office space, everything except the personnel cost, which is coming from this grant. And they're housed, obviously, over in the gang unit. This position gets referrals from the Police Department, from Lincoln Public Schools, and then we have a number of parents who also call our gang outreach coordinator who are concerned about their kids and their involvement in gang activity. They work with the individual, provide case management, and plug them into community resources that are already out there.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this grant contract. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. G is a real estate purchase and sales agreement with Wayuga Cemetery for property adjacent to 625 North 46th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. There is no cost to the county.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved and seconded that we approve this real estate purchase and sale agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. H is an agreement with Christian Heritage for implementation of relationship workshops and parental involvement training for the Lancaster County Department of Corrections. The county will pay $24,876.75 per year for the services. Term of the agreement is January 1st, 2017 through December 31st, 2018.
Good morning. Brad Johnson, Director of Department of Corrections. Brenda Fisher's here with Mayor Pro, Programs Director. This is a renewal of a contract that we've been using for several years to provide some parenting classes and that type of service to the folks who are in our facility. So I thought I'd come up here and if you guys had any questions, Brenda would probably be able to give you some detailed information if you need it.
Yes, so just a little bit of background. Christian Heritage began coming into the jail in 2014, and they are teaching two separate class curriculums. They're doing a common sense parenting class, and they are also teaching a program called Within My Reach, which is a program that is designed to give individuals who are in our custody a skill set related to fostering healthy domestic relationships with a specific focus on the relationship with the spouse or significant other in their life. As many of you are aware, we have a large number of inmates who have involvement with the Department of Health and Human Services due to the fact that their children are either in foster care or wards of the state, living in group homes in a variety of situations. So the common sense parenting component was a natural fit because it is something that they will be expected to participate in and complete in conjunction with any kind of reunification or supervised visitation plan relative to their children. And the Within My Reach class, again, was a natural fit for our population because so many come in on offenses that are in some way collaterally tied to domestic altercations. So that was the basis of choosing these particular curriculums among several that Christian Heritage could offer.
Christian Hudkins?
Well, we have had a longstanding relationship with Christian Heritage Homes and the work that they do, and just glad to hear that you're able to select a couple of programs that you think will be the most beneficial, and I would move approval.
Second.
Moved and seconded that we approve this agreement. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Mr. Avery?
Yeah, I was just wondering, did you have other candidates for this program, or is this the only one?
Well, at this time, because we've had the relationship for the past two years with Christian Heritage, and it's been well-received and well-attended by the inmates, we did not look necessarily for anyone else to provide these particular services. This is an opportunity to essentially continue the participation in the programming format that we have. With this particular program, just to give you an idea, within, in the last 12 months, from December of 2015 through November of this year, the Within My Reach class was completed by 126 inmates, and the Common Sense Parenting Class was completed by 121. So that's a pretty decent completion rate. Obviously, everyone who starts a program doesn't necessarily get through to completion because they may bond out, they may get into disciplinary trouble, but this program and the format that Christian Heritage is using is one that we've received a lot of positive feedback from our inmates.
So you're...
So we just look to renew it.
So you're convinced this is money well-spent?
Correct.
I guess just real quick, it does, these funds do come out of the inmate benefit fund, so it's not coming off the, out of tax dollars, no.
Okay. But I was reading the resolution, and it says the county will pay.
Well, it... Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Sure.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, there has been a motion and a second, so let's call for the roll.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
4I is a lease with Piertech Inc. for land located at 801 West Gate Boulevard, Lincoln, Lancaster County to facilitate construction projects. The term of the lease is December 13th, 2016 through February 13th, 2017. The county shall not receive monetary compensation.
Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer. I have Ron Bohati from our office with me today. This is a piece of ground that is kind of across from our county office shop area, and the adjacent landowner is going to construct an expansion. We have come up with an agreement, mostly to cover all of our bases, that he can store his construction materials in this area while he's doing his addition, and that he will restore any damage to the area when he's done.
I'd move approval of the good neighbor policy.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this lease with Piertech Inc. Oh, I'm sorry, again.
Why is there no monetary transaction here or component? Are we in the business of providing free leases to land?
It's temporary, and it's just to store materials over a short period of time, so we made the decision to not, mostly this agreement is just to cover any damages or any legal issues that might be associated with the storage of the construction.
Mr. Wilson?
And I think we discussed this last Thursday at our staff meeting, that the adjacent landowner will make improvements to the drainage, and it will benefit the county.
Right. Ron Bohati, Assistant Superintendent for Lancaster County. On the picture, there's a drainage ditch between our parking lot and their property, and some erosion has happened that's caused that to fill in. During this process, they're going to be fixing that area and putting a retaining wall in, so we felt to be a good neighbors. Larry had said that we would let them use the property, but we wanted to make sure we were covered.
Yeah, I do remember the discussion Thursday, but I'm always suspicious when we are giving away things.
Any further discussion? Okay, there's been move and seconded that we approve this lease. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilchin?
Yes.
Hudkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. J is a professional services agreement with Manoli Wagner and Associates to finalize plans relating to bridge replacement project number C-55-C-91 located on Raymond Road. The work will, shall be completed by March 15th, 2017. Cost to the county is $23,485.94.
So this contract, Pam Dingman, Lancaster County Engineer, this contract is associated with Bridge C-91, which is located on Raymond Road just west of First Street. The practice of prior administration was to contract out for the design of the bridge only, and I know Commissioner Shore, you were recently on our bridge site down in Firth when we opened it back up, and there's a lot of other pieces and parts associated with these bridges, permitting, grading, tying back into the streets, erosion control, and pieces and parts. I believe that it is the best, most efficient practice to include these all in one package rather than we do some of it in the office and the consultant does some of it and then the issue... issues that that provide. It's just not an efficient operation. So this contract is to go ahead and finish up the rest of those bridge plans, and then also to get that wetlands permit. And we, it has been submitted once, we have comments on it, and we have met with the Army Corps of Engineers and Parks and Wildlife. So I'm sure that won't be, that was our first meeting, I'm sure it won't be our last, but we're going to endeavor to get the permitting for this bridge so we can build it next year.
That was going to be my question, are you hoping to start construction in the spring?
Yes, this bridge is our only bridge that remains open, and Rhodes has approved this. It is a two on the scour critical, so this is obviously an area that I'm very concerned about, and we need to get replaced as soon as possible.
Approximate construction time, year?
Next summer.
And Commissioner Avery?
Am I to conclude that this is a priority?
That is correct, Commissioner Avery.
You have consistently refused to prioritize projects in the past. I find this interesting.
Well, that is not true. I have prioritized projects at several meetings, and you'll have to...
But I specifically asked you to prioritize, and you said you couldn't do it because everything's equally essential.
I move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve this professional services agreement. Any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions for Engineer Dingman. This is on a very major farm-to-market road, and it'd be good if we can get this constructed before harvest of next year. Also, James Arthur Vineyards, most of traffic from Lincoln goes out there, too. What is, are there, so that people will know in the future, how will we reroute the area? I think I've asked you numerous times about the chances of a shoe fly or something around it, and with the wetlands, that's going to make that, you feel almost impossible. So are we going to go around the section, or what will, what should the people in that area expect, and for how long?
The reality is, is that this bridge is going to be very complex to construct. We have to span over the habitat of the tiger beetle. It is tiger beetle habitat. It is also habitat of the endangered plant called the salt wart, which we have harvested in the area, and Parks and Wildlife actually have the seeds and plants in their freezer. In addition to that, there has also been some documented presence or possibility of presence of the long-eared brown bat. So a shoe fly is out of the question, we will most likely have to go around the mile. I do expect that the construction of this bridge could take in the range of two to three months.
And so the detour will be on the mile, would you come off of 14th Street and go a mile west and then a mile south, or?
Okay, so as we're working on this, this contract is to finish up the plans and solidify the rest of those details, so if we're going to go into a detailed plan review, I would really rather do that at a time when we have the plans complete and the permits all issued.
Just so we do dissemination, so the community knows how to plan for it, and those businesses don't suffer unnecessarily.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, we do have a motion in the second on this. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. K are contracts for the anti-rerequirement for snow and ice removal services. Terms of the contract is one year from the date of execution, and this includes the Grand Excavating Inc. Cost to the county is not to exceed $40,000. And Mr. Yards &amp; More LLC, cost to the county is not to exceed $3,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve these contracts. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. L is a contract with Altech Industries to provide preventive maintenance and inspection for aerial lifts and trucks. Term of the contract is one year from the date of execution. Cost to the county is not to exceed $1,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve this contract with Altech Industries. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. M is designation of official Lancaster County newspapers for 2017 publication of transportation projects as follows: The Lincoln Journal Store, The Voice of Hickman, and The News of Waverly. Move approval. Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve this designation of the Lancaster County newspapers for publication of transportation projects. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. N is deposit placement agreement and custodial agreement with Security First Bank for certificate and deposit account registry services.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve this deposit placement agreement and custodial agreement. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. O are amendments to the following contracts for moving services. The amendments extend the contracts from January 28th, 2017, through February 28th, 2017. Cost to the county is not to exceed $3,000, and this includes County Contract C-14-46 with Black Belt Movers, County Contract C-14-45 with Office Interiors and Design Inc., and County Contract C-14-47 with Selective Van and Storage Mayflower Transit.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve these amendments to the contracts. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Just a second. Yeah, the friendly amendment.
That's what I thought. And it's what I thought. Okay, I'm sorry. You looked at me, I thought, did I make that motion? Okay.
Well, we'll just go back there, okay?
All right. We did make a incorrect assumption here as to who made the motion on the approval of the annual salary. Let's just go back and revisit that.
Madam Chair, I would move reconsideration of item C.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we reconsider the item 4C. Any discussion?
The amendment stands?
No. We need to go back and revisit it.
Yeah, okay, let's revisit this. So it's been moved in second, that we revisit this. Any discussion?
Yes, I would like to propose as an amendment that we...
Well, we need to vote on reconsideration.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, yes, please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
This is procedural, right?
Yes.
So as the maker of the original motion, I would accept the amendment that you proposed to change it to a three-year, three-month review.
Okay.
And secondor concurs.
Secondor concurs. It was one of you two, I knew that. Okay, so it has been moved in second, that we go forward with the friendly amendment to set this $106,000 with a three-month review. So any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
No, that's okay. Well, thank you for pointing that. Glad you caught it, yeah, absolutely.
You guys are the professionals up there. Keep it in line.
Okay, next is number five, consent items. Receive and place and file the following reports for November 2016. Assess or register deeds and records and information management.
Move approval of the consent items.
Second.
It's moved to second, that we approve the consent items. Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, non-agenda, may do so at this time.
Okay, so I would like to recess this now, at this point in time?
Should we go into announcements first?
Oh, okay, okay.
Number seven are announcements. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, December 15, 2016. Due to the Board's attendance at the Nebraska Association of County Officials Annual Conference in Kearney, Nebraska, the next staff meeting will be on Tuesday, December 20, 2016, at 10:00 a.m., or immediately following the Board of Equalization meeting in the Bill Luxford Studio at the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold their next regular meeting on Tuesday, December 20, 2016, at 9:00 a.m. in room 112 of the County City Building, with the Board of Equalization immediately following. Due to the holidays, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not meet on Thursday, December 22nd, Tuesday, December 27th, or Thursday, December 29th, 2016. County Commissioners can reach at 402-441-7447, or commission@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live. It is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on FISVTV, Cable Channel 5. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the Internet at lancaster NE.gov under FISVTV, Video on Demand, or FISVTV on YouTube.
Okay, and now, let's go on then, let's recess, and then go on to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. A new share copy of our material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff, and material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item 1 are minutes to approve of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, December 6, 2016. Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we approve the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held last week. Any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications, and this includes Christian Heritage Children's Home, Crystal Ray Catholic Church of Lincoln, Grace Lutheran Church, Our Lady of Guadalupe Seminary, Sheridan Lutheran Church, St. Mark's United Methodist Church, and Union College.
Do we have, I will open this public hearing? Do we have anyone, I see no one really to speak on any of these. I will close the public hearing, and so let's move to three.
Number three is action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second, that we approve this action on the motor vehicle tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number four is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county board of equalization business, non-agenda, may do so at this time. Move a tournament.
Second.
It's moved in second, that we adjourn the Board of Equalization meeting, and please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, and now let's return back to the Board of Commissioners meeting, and this is, so, we go back to item 3B.
And this is recognition of County Commissioner Larry Hutkins for his dedicated service to the people of Lancaster County.
Did I go up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I think Commissioner Amundson had a presentation for Commissioner Hutkins.
Looks like there's somebody else wanting to speak as well.
Hey, anyone else wants to speak? Yes, oh. Are you doing? Good. Good.
Nice clock, I recognize that.
Hey, yeah. Larry, congratulations on the completion of 30 years. That is a tremendous amount of service that you have given to Lancaster County, to the citizens of Lancaster County, and there has been, there have been so many projects that you've overseen, there's been so many buildings that you've worked with, and so many services that you have really initiated and overseen. And the people of Lancaster County, all of them have been touched by your services here in some way, directly or indirectly, and this is really a tremendous thing. I have been constantly amazed at how, at your memory, how you can remember these things that go all the way back, and so if I ever needed something, and I say, hey Larry, when did this happen? What did it do? And you've been a great inspiration for many people when you start looking at the number of years of dedicated and professional service, and we thank you. This is a gift that we would like to give to you, and so...
I want to get a picture, too.
Oh, okay, yeah, sorry. Yeah. Okay. And I would be remiss, and so this is for you, and I would also be remiss, though, if I did not extend my gratitude to your wife. Carol? Yes, you may as well come up, too, now, yes. I was going to have, but you have provided support and backup for him for all of these years, and you didn't kill him.
There have been times.
There have been times. But was he never thought about divorce, but definitely murder, right?
Several occasions.
Yes, okay.
I think it involved wallpaper, didn't it?
Yeah.
And so I really wanted to say thank you to you also, because behind every successful man, there is always a woman, right?
Thank you. Well, Larry has certainly enjoyed, Larry has certainly enjoyed his time on the county board. There have been so many projects, you were saying that, that he has taken part in. There was one gentleman who shall remain nameless at this point unless Larry wants to say it. He said, Larry, never met a building that he didn't like. But we have, he, as well as I, have enjoyed our time being with this group. This is a neat group of people. farmers should be farming the ground, rather than letting it sit idle. Mental Health Center, Deb, you were big into that, Roma, you were big into that, too. It started when I was there, I think, in fact, Commissioner Shore made the motion, if I remember correctly, to return it to private practice, where it should be. Lancaster Manor, we certainly didn't agree on. It's over, it's done with. I believe it's working. I don't have any, I don't follow it that close. Sheriff's Cars, sometimes it was a real big, but sometimes...
Forty thousand.
Yeah. But all in all, the board I sat on considered what was good for the county and not what was good for the individual here. And you don't very often decide on that. I was accused of that a lot, but that kind of brushed off, and just one of those things you put up with when you're a county commissioner. So, Larry, I congratulate you. Thirty years is a long time to have somebody chewing on your backside, but as you can see, mine's mostly gone, you still have some left. So, congratulations to you, bud. Take care of yourself. Have fun.
Will do.
Well, I think former Commissioner Hare did an excellent job of summarizing some of the major accomplishments and disputes, I guess, that we had over our time together. Speaking on behalf of those who have come before me, thank you for being a mentor, someone that took the time to educate and help bring those of us along the way, a mentor and a friend. And what I will miss is your expertise, your ag expertise. We're losing that on the board, and that was always an important voice that you were able to share. Your expertise in heavy equipment, I, you know, been doing this now for a long time, and I still don't know what a lot of those machines do. So, having, having your knowledge there was valuable as well. So, we'll, we'll miss working with you. It's been a very enjoyable 15 years.
Thank you.
Okay, Todd?
Well, to add to what Commissioners Shore and Hare mentioned, as well as Amundson, I really can't add much more, other than appreciation. I know that, looking back, one of my most important moments in my life would be the day that I showed up at a Farm Bureau convention at the Embassy Suites and ran into you. And you mentioned to me that a, my predecessor was not running for reelection, and you encouraged me to, to consider running for county board. So, I guess if anything I do wrong on the board, you will be blamed for it.
I'll accept that.
Thank you so much for your service, and yeah, it will not be the same without you. Thanks, Larry. Bill? It's my turn. You have been, in my opinion, the epitome of public service. You never went into this that I couldn't detect. For yourself, it was always, what can you do for the good of the people in this county? I think you can look back on these 30 years, and you can be proud of it, because we're proud of the work you've done. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Larry, I think it's your turn.
Okay. Well, some of you have heard this story before, but I'm going to take a minute or two to go through it. I was selected Star Farmer of Nebraska through the FFA in 1962, and as a result of that, 56 of us were selected to go behind the Iron Curtain. Crew Chef opened it up at that time and said he'd take a youth group in, and the FFA was selected for that, and people-to-people coordinated it. And so, that summer after graduation from high school in 1962, I spent that summer over in, we actually, orientation in, in New York City, and then Washington DC, and they got us ready for it, and then we went overseas. One night at my host's family, being a farm boy growing up in the Waverly area on a tenant farm, why, we always had plenty to eat, because we were farmers, wasn't always fancy, but we always had plenty. But one night with my host's family over behind the Iron Curtain, it was the only time I ever went to bed hungry in my life. When it came time for mealtime that evening, we each had one boiled egg and one boiled potato, and that's all the people had. I always remember their kitchen window, it was a four-pane window, about 30 inches by 30 inches, and one pane was missing. And in that one pane, they simply had a piece of wax paper taped in. They had waited a year and a half for a piece of glass and couldn't get it. And those are the things that we just don't take for granted, because we haven't had to do without in this country for many, many years. We went through quite a rough time during the Depression, but after that, why, things just kept getting better, most of my lifetime. And I made a commitment to myself that night, as I was kind of feeling sorry for myself, because I didn't have all I wanted to eat. I had probably enough, but not all I wanted. If I ever got back to the United States, I was going to participate in government in some fashion or form. And started out on co-op board, and then the school board, and then this opportunity came up when four farm organizations urged me to run, because there hadn't been a farmer in Lancaster County for about 23 years. Ralph Harland was the last one down there. And so, I said, well, I'll try it a time or two. Little did I ever expect to be here for 30 years, but such wonderful people I had to work with. Jan Gauger, the first chair that I served under, just a tremendous visionary, and taught me a lot. Carol and I grew up only a mile and a half from each other, but I didn't know her till she came into high school. She went to a one-room school, north of Greenwood, rode a horse to school, but in the, after the eighth grade, she came to Waverly. And I was so ornery that she wouldn't go out with me the first three years, but finally, the fourth year, she, she caved in, and a couple years later, while we were both in college, sophomore year, we, we got married in 1964. And she's just been a wonderful wife. As she said, at her 50th wedding anniversary, she's never considered divorce, but murdered on a couple occasions. The sad thing is, I know when those occasions were. Once when she was helping me sort cattle, and once when I was helping her wallpaper the kitchen. So, you guys don't wallpaper the kitchen with your spouse. But wonderful opportunity. Kathy Campbell, a state senator, was another great person to work with. And then, probably the person I was the closest to in all these years was this gentleman right here, Bernie Hare. As two farmers, we had a common bond. I urged him to be on the planning commission, so he was uniquely prepared when he became a county commissioner, and just, just been a joy to work with, with all of you. And Deb, what I admire about you is your willingness to learn. You said, I don't know much about agriculture, but I want to ride a combine. Well, you never rode mine, but you did go out and operate Bernie's. And we've got pickers to prove it. And Roma, these last four years have just been absolutely a joy. You're an old farm girl from northern Nebraska, and you're still a farmer in Lancaster County. You raise bees, and this is one of the things that we need to realize, that Lancaster County is bigger than most counties. It's over 860 square miles, and there's a reason for that, and a lot of the viewers probably don't know that, but you look at the weather map at night when they're given the weather, and you notice that most of the counties along the Kansas line are nice little square counties, 24 miles by 24 miles, or 24 by 36 miles. Clay County went bankrupt in the late 1800s, and it was a county between us and Beatrice, and they gave half of it to Gage County and the other half to Lancaster County. So, we're a large county by eastern Nebraska standards. We have more farms in Lancaster County than any other county, and we have bees, we have aquaculture, we have a gentleman that raises geranium seeds, which is probably one of the highest grossing farms in there, and we've got one of the largest dairies in the state. So, not only do we raise cattle, hogs, corn, and all those kind of things, but almost everything that's raised in Nebraska is also raised in Lancaster County. So, I guess that's the reason I was so close to Bernie Hare, because we both understood that part. And you will have to make decisions that are going to be tough in the future, but all of you have qualities that have brought you here, and your willingness to serve. Todd, you helped bring one of the reasons why I'm, I'm leaving county government. Todd worked for Congressman Fortenberry, and my daughter married a Dane and moved to Denmark 12 years ago, and lived over there, and we have two grandchildren that were born in Denmark, and it was 6,000 miles to go over and see them. Well, a couple years ago, my mother passed away, and at Christmas time, her farm had not sold yet, and Henrik and Kathy said, is that farm still for sale? We'd like to buy it. Best Christmas present we ever had, but then, did we have a long road to hoe, because we had to have help getting Henrik over here. And Todd really worked with the family to facilitate that. And Henrik said, they were paying 47% income tax. When Kathy went over there 12 years ago, the final year, they paid 70% in income tax. So, just, there's, there's reasons why, why people leave countries, even though it's a country of their birth. And Bill, we're of different parties, but I was on a selection team for Friend of Agriculture, and Senator Avery, when he applied his broad background in business, his willingness to look at all aspects, you were unanimous choice by our Lancaster County Farm Bureau for Friend of Agriculture. It's, and you retain that as you have run for county commissioner as well, so. And your wife is probably the best reporter that I ever had to work with when she was a reporter. We used to have two papers when I started. We had The Journal and The Star, and it was good, because we had balance. Well, I've gone on long enough, but all I want to do is say thank you for the opportunity. It gave me an opportunity to farm, and yet, be of service to the public, and it's been a great ride. Little did I ever think it turned out to, starting my 30th year in June, but it's, it's been a good one. Chief Douglas Hevickin believed in me with the first appointment, and he, too, is an old farm boy from up at Skylar, Nebraska. So, thank you for the memories, and we're going to miss you, but going to go home and chase those grandkids. Now, we're a mile and a half away, instead of 8,000 miles away, so we're going to enjoy them. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Larry, and really...
And as you know, I'm always running behind time. This will help. Thank you so much. What a wonderful memory. Thank you very much.
Would you like to make the motion to adjourn?
I would.
Yeah. And I would like to say one thing.[1628.53]